Okay, I've got 4:30. I'd like to call this special meeting of the Kokomo Planting Commission order. First thing on the order of business, Director Sheilin?
Yes, case 8Z17, petition of Tim Martin, Advantix Development Corporation, hereby certify that notice of the public hearing of the Kokomo City Plan Commission to consider case number 8Z17, change in zone classification from R4 medium-density urban residential, PR parks and recreation, and HI high-intensity industrial heavy manufacturing to M2 general multifamily residential for property described as lots 2 through 6 of EA Scott's addition, lots 40 through 45 in Hamlin Highlands addition, part of lot 58 in Superior addition, City of Kokomo Center Township, Howard County, Indiana at 1124 South Union, 1215 South Union, 610 East Ricketts, and 720 East Boulevard.
Moved to approve.
Second. Before I call Representative up to the mic, anyone that wants to address the board tonight, please come to the microphone and state your name and address. I also ask that you turn off any electric devices that you might have, so that you just may not disrupt the meeting. And also, if we have somebody talking up here, we deeply appreciate if there wasn't subcom, subcon, sub talking in the audience, because that kind of makes it hard for everyone to hear what's being said. So, that being said, who's ever here to represent this case, please step forward.
(inaudible)
I was trying to get it there, but it just wasn't going to come out.
Good afternoon, my name is Tim Martin, I'm with the Advantix Development Corporation. We're here requesting zoning change to facilitate the development of trailside townhomes, 45 units of affordable housing located on the four parcels you see before you. I've brought site plans, as well as a rendering of what the brownstone configuration would look like, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Is there any members of the board that have any questions?
Can you flip that one around? Have there been any changes since we last saw this case?
Revisions to the site plan would show we've added, one of the outputs or the takeaways from the previous meeting was concern about areas for children to play. Taking that into consideration, we've added play areas to the Rickett's site as indicated here and here. Those play areas are available to the public, they would not be just for the children or residents of the development. Additionally, we show the handicap parking spaces for these units as well, that's an output of the BZA meeting. Other than that, the, I think I had the trailside here, but not in a full-size rendering, I had it in a sheet drawing, wanted to bring that. And that's a representation of the stone and facade features that we would incorporate, not only in the brownstones, but also in the townhomes that we're proposing to construct.
I'd like to say that's good information about the player, because that means that you'd be taking care of a lot of the green space that's there too, the mow and stuff like that, so that's included, wouldn't it?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, okay.
You're going to be doing park equipment as well, playground equipment?
Playground equipment provided by the development, yes.
Oh, okay.
Any other questions from the board before we hear the staff report? Director Sheilin?
Staff report for case 8Z17, Tim Martin requesting Advantix Development Corporation is requesting a change in zone classification for properties located at 1124 South Union, 1215 South Union, 610 East Ricketts, and 720 East Boulevard. The planned use is multifamily residential. The joint property uses and zonings at 1124 South Union and 1215 South Union, that's to the west, R4 urban residential and HI high-intensity industrial; to the east, C1 small to medium-scale general commercial, R4 urban residential, and MI moderate intensity industrial; to the south, R4 urban residential; and to the north, R4 urban residential, and C1 small to medium-scale general commercial. The joint property uses and zonings at 610 East Ricketts and 720 East Boulevard are to the west, R4 urban residential; to the east, R4 urban residential and IS institutional; to the south, R4 urban residential, IS institutional, and OC office commercial; and to the north, R4 urban residential. According to the City of Kokomo Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map, 1124 South Union and 1215 South Union properties are located in an area proposed for medium-density residential and office high-tech light industrial. According to the City of Kokomo Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map, the 610 East Ricketts and 720 East Boulevard properties are located in an area proposed for medium-density residential. Land use goals to encourage orderly and responsible development to promote health, safety, and quality of life of residents in the City of Kokomo. Relevant land use objectives are to remove barriers to the redevelopment of vacant or underutilized commercial and industrial buildings; allow for a variety of low, mid, and high-intensity land uses to better ensure that there are diverse opportunities to live, work, and play; to remove barriers to infill development on vacant residential lots. The City of Kokomo Comprehensive Plan Transportation Map defines South Union Street in this area as a minor collector, defines as a street designed to facilitate the collection of traffic from local streets. According to local counts, the daily traffic count is 1,158 cars per day. The proposed use of multifamily residential would not significantly increase traffic flow in this street. The City of Kokomo Comprehensive Plan Transportation Map defines Rickett Street in this area as a local street, defined as a street designed primarily to provide access to abutting properties and discourage through traffic. There are no traffic council available for this street, but the proposed use of multifamily residential would not significantly increase traffic flow in this area. The requested zoning change is compatible with all surrounding zonings, therefore, the staff recommends the Plan Commission forward a favorable recommendation to the Kokomo Common Council.
Any questions from the board now that we've heard the staff report? Anyone in the audience? How many comments now we've heard the staff report?
Jim Lipke, 508 East Poplar, thanks for the opportunity to speak. There have been some changes in the gentleman's presentation, could we look at them?
Sure.
Turn them around if you need to, Jim, yeah.
None of us are opposed to housing for people, I mean, everyone needs a place to live, we understand that. I'm wondering, I was reading your rules of procedure, and it says under petitions, the zoning ordinance amendment, they're required to present a petition duly signed by the owners of 50% or more of the area involved. Now, who's presenting this petition? Is this gentleman presenting it?
Correct.
He is?
Correct.
Okay, does he own the land?
He doesn't have to own the land, he can-
That's what it says.
Let me finish, Jim.
Okay.
He can have a duly authorized person to sign for, and that's what's happened in this case.
And who is the duly-
Do that all the time.
And who was that?
I don't have that in front of me, I'm not sure. I don't have that in front of me.
And I'm sorry, can you tell me exactly where you're reading from?
Yeah, there's three pages on the rules of procedure, and it's on page one.
Sure, are you reading the Plan Commission's rules of procedures?
Yes.
Or the Board of Zoning Appeals?
The Plan Commission's.
Okay, because as I read Article 3A, it says amendments to the zoning ordinance proposing to change the zone maps may be initiated by the Plan Commission, or by a petition signed by property owners who own at least 50% of the land involved in the petition. So, the Plan Commission also has the right to do this without having 50% of the property owners do it.
Okay, so the petition can be, since the city owns the land, the city can be the one that puts the petition in?
Correct.
Okay, so this gentleman is not the one doing it?
I'm not sure how it was actually filed, I'm merely telling you that that is our rules of procedures. I just want to, I wanted to identify that you weren't reading the Board of Zoning Appeals' rules of procedures, because those are different than what this board does.
Okay, well, I thought it had to go through the Plan Commission before it went to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
No, it goes through the Plan Commission before it goes to City Council.
So, the Board of Zoning Appeals is separate?
That's what the hearing was on Thursday, that's an entirely different body that does, that has different jurisdiction over issues.
Okay, so the two are not related?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Well then, in regard to what's happening, we've got a lot of questions. This is all or nothing, a petition like if you're, you can't just okay the ones on Union, and not the other two, or anything like that?
Correct, he's presenting it as one file.
Okay. And I know we're, you mentioned that in regard to financing for the gentleman, is that private financing or funding?
He has to apply for that as a private developer, and part of his credits are coming, he would apply through the state, so that would be public credits he would get through the state.
I'm sorry, it would be what? Public?
Public credits he would get through the state, the, I just know it by its acronym, IHCAA, Indiana Housing, it's the Indiana Housing Authority through the state.
What are public credits?
He would be better to talk about that, because I've not personally applied as a developer, he would be better at-
Okay, well, I'd like to go on before we go there. Who is responsible for the mowing and the landscaping and the snow removal on this?
Private.
Is that the property owner?
Currently, or if it is-
If it's approved.
It would be the private owners, the developer.
Okay. And he will then own the land, or their corporation, Advantix will own the land, correct?
Or some subsidiary of them, yes, I assume.
Okay. And I assume it won't be sold by the city to him until this is approved, is that correct?
Yes, there's an option agreement that would be executed between the two parties. If he does not secure financing, then that property will not transfer.
Okay, so, how do we-
We have to wait until he secures his financing, and, so what an option agreement does, it commits the property to a developer, and once they prove they can afford to build the development, then they can execute on that option agreement, and it's sold at that point, so that's months later.
It would be sold at that point, okay. Now, how do we learn whether the financing was approved or not?
I have to assume he'll be back in order to do his development and plan approvals.
Okay, and will be another meeting?
Yes, it's a public-
And it will be advertised 48 hours ahead, as I understand now, right?
Well, I would have-
10 days won't require, because you've changed it?
No, that's not necessarily true. The changing to the Plan Commission was to, there are certain designated times that 10 days are required and 48 hours are required. And I don't, as I sit here, I don't know whether or not which rules would apply, but it would still be posted, like it was posted at the property before that you knew.
Right.
So, even if you don't pick up the newspaper and see it 10 days before, you would see it on the land.
Okay, and the meeting that you held at 4, how was that authorized? It wasn't advertised?
It was posted.
Where?
No, it wasn't posted, it was advertised in the paper.
Well, then it was also posted.
It was posted at your office.
It was posted at the office and here on the door.
And, I mean, most of us don't walk through there every day, and we don't know what's going on every day.
This is, the rules of procedure is an internal document for the Plan Commission, so this is the only board that had-
But the advertising is state statute.
Correct.
So, that's not really open to the public, how you, what you do as far as changing the rules of procedure, correct?
We did it in a public meeting.
Yes.
We had a, we had a public meeting where-
But it wasn't advertised.
It was advertised in the newspaper, yes.
It was advertised.
For 4 o'clock today?
It was advertised in the paper.
For 4 o'clock today?
It was notified.
Do you, huh?
Yes.
We're required, we're required, January, by, in January of every year, any publication that wants notifications has to notify the Plan Commission, we want to get notifications. So, when they do that, then the Plan Commission notifies those people who have requested a notification, as well as posting it according to the state statute. Statute expels out what you have to do for a public notification for-
Okay, so, let me ask again, at 4 o'clock, did you change the procedure where, because previously it said that if the, if it didn't pass with approval or disapproval, married it? An action of a Plan Commission is not official unless it is authorized by a majority of the entire membership of the Plan Commission. If a vote does not receive support or opposition from a majority of the Plan Commission members, then the Plan Commission shall continue the hearing on any petitions to the next regularly-scheduled Plan Commission meeting, which would have been November 14th.
Forgive me, sir, but again, I don't know what you're reading from, because the document I have in front of me-
Well, that's not the Board of Zoning, that's the Plan Commission's rules of procedure.
Correct, what I've got in my-
Which is, which is what we had last time, was the Plan Commission meeting on October 10th. And at that time, according to your own rules, it should have been continued to the next regularly-scheduled meeting, not today.
Okay, again, I'm going to tell you that what you just read is not language from our Plan Commission rules of procedure that are literally in my hands right now.
It is from that, it's under, unless you just now changed it. It's what's, it's what's posted on the website for the public to read.
Okay.
And it is page 2, paragraph C, number 9, section C.
And that's not even how this is documented, so, and that's, honestly, what we're doing right now is not completely irrelevant, because I'm not sure the point that you're trying to make.
The point I'm trying to make is, according to-
Is there a question?
Pardon me?
Do you have a question about procedure, or do you think that we're illegally conducting this meeting?
I don't know if you are, I'm asking.
No, we are not. I have an ethical obligation as an attorney of the city-
I understand that.
That I would not lie to you on camera.
I'm not accusing anyone of lying, I'm saying what was written, on the city's webpage, there are three pages of the Plan Commission's rules and procedures, not the Board of Zoning Appeals, but the Plan Commission itself. Sorry?
This document is way more than three pages.
But what's it titled as?
Are you asking about the majority vote?
No.
Whether or not that that's still relevant?
Yes, yes, I am asking about that, yes. Because it said, it says if it doesn't pass or fail, to paraphrase it, then it shall be continued to the next regularly-scheduled meeting. And that's what's on the City of Kokomo's website, if you look up on the Plan Commission itself, Kokomo City Plan Commission Procedures for Meetings and Public Hearings, and that's the header on it.
Okay, so your preference was that we would have met at a regular scheduled meeting and not called a special meeting for this?
I just wonder how the special meeting is called.
Well, certain times we call a special meeting for different cases where we have a special case trying to get through, and these are legal, it's in-
Okay, well, you guys are the experts, if you say it's legal, then it's legal.
I mean, you were notified, you're all here.
I wasn't, but they let me know.
Article 5 subsection V talks about special meetings, which is what this is, so it requires three days advance notice and 48 hours notice of posting.
Okay, moot point, I guess. Is there an occupancy limit per fire marshal, like theaters and some nightclubs and maybe bars have, for each unit?
That would be discussed during development plan approval, Jim. I don't know what that is, but that would be discussed during development plan approval. We would have the fire department out our tack meetings, and all that would be discussed at that point in time, if we get to that.
And I understand this meeting is about-
Right.
The variances that are requested, correct? No?
It's all about changing zoning.
Zone, well, and, but isn't part of it requesting the variance, whether or not you change the zoning?
No.
The variances were approved Thursday night.
So, is everything I'm saying here not relevant? Pretty much?
You have a right, you have a right to attend and ask any questions that you want.
Okay, all right. Well, the only business is close, there's a half a block away, there's a convenience store within walking distance of, of the ones on Rickett and Boulevard's. The next closest businesses within walking distance are the Oasis Tavern and Burton Johns Tavern. The next closest is another convenience store on the other side of what used to be Gateway Gardens, whatever it's, it's Park, Park, Park something now, whatever it's called. And then the next closest place is Hacienda, which is probably 3/4 of a mile away. So, there are no businesses, no conveniences, other than a convenience store, other than a couple of bars, close to where you're building anything. Trash pickup, well, these, I know it's not part of it, but it does matter to these folks, the trash trucks comes through and pick up on the right side. So, are these places going to have totes or dumpsters? They're going to have city totes or dumpsters?
I don't know whether that's been determined yet.
Because it is relevant, because if they pick up on the right side, then all these folks are going to have a bunch of trash containers in their yards.
If it was, if it was a city pickup, because it's, because it's dead end, they'd pick up either way, either on the way in or on the way out. So, on the way in, for at least the four that are on the south side of Rickett, or the six that are on the south side of Ricketts, those would, if they were front set outs, which they likely would be, they'd be, they'd be set out right on the south side of Ricketts.
Okay, but the trash truck doesn't make two trips through there?
Yeah, it can't, it can't pick up the properties on the east without going in and going out. On cul-de-sacs, it doesn't, doesn't matter, we don't set trash-
A cul-de-sac, they can do a turnaround.
Sure, sure.
On this, on this, I think it's an obtuse angle, the, the angle of the alley is not right angle, it's more than right angle, and the truck cannot possibly turn around.
And forgive me for not having all of our ordinances memorized, but I'm nearly confident that in almost all apartment complexes, the private, the private owner is responsible for trash pickup.
Okay.
That is not the responsibility of the city. So, there would be no city trash trucks.
Anything over four units-
Then it's not an issue.
Right.
Right, that is-
Good.
I'm afraid you can see that, I'm pretty sure that's what our words is.
Will these units be available to HUD or other agencies?
No, this is not HUD housing, from what I believe we've been told.
No, only private?
No.
And will they have balconies or porches? It looks like, is, are these a representation of the Rickett Street property?
Brownstone. Yes. It shows them, but now you said there are only two, sorry. It does show balconies, correct? And is there a front and back door, or just, just that?
Okay.
And I will say, sir, that a lot of the questions that you're asking, if financing is approved, and he does come back for development plan approval, almost everything that you're asking will be discussed at that point.
Okay.
The board will, so I don't want you to think that these are things currently the board doesn't care about.
I know you're not blowing them off, it's, yes, fine. But I just, before the vote happens, I want everyone to understand the neighborhood's concerns, and it may, you know, it may impact how you feel about it. It appears you're only, did you change the planning, the parking?
Excuse me, ma'am, please. Okay, they changed, they changed it from 11 parking spaces to 16, so there's one per These are three-bed units. There's a possibility of two persons per bed, correct? Could be two kids sleep in one bed, two kids in another, and the parents in another, possibly, or whatever combination it is. That would be six people per unit. There are 16 units, that's 96 people.
Are 96 people only going to have one car apiece between each family for, for six people? Is that how we're planning it?
I would probably suggest that if whoever is looking to live in that location, if they believe that parking is a problem, they'll probably choose to live somewhere else.
I got, I would say that our past experience, I wasn't there for the BZA meeting, I assume variance to parking was discussed-
Yes.
-at that meeting, but we have, we have approved several developments with a one-car-per-unit, at a one-car-per-unit rate, and we haven't, we have not seen that those developments have incurred a dramatic amount of parking that have exceeded that number. Like, I would just say, that's my, that's my past experience.
Okay.
Look at Kingston Apartments, the ones that were just built at Apperson and Jefferson, those, those all have approximately that many. If you look at the, the ones at Jackson and Washington, there was, they purchased an additional parking lot that is empty every time I go by, and they, and they got a variance for reduced parking as well, on top of it, so.
There's no property over there to purchase for an additional parking lot?
At Jackson and, and Jackson and Washington?
No, we're on Ricketts and Boulevard.
Right, what I'm saying, what I'm saying is, those, those were a one-per-unit, and, we have, I personally haven't gotten any complaints in my office about parking problems at those units, at those, at those developments, so.
Okay, now, may I show you something about?
Today, we, we parked a couple of cars on Rickett Street, and this will show you the width of Rickett Street. That's two cars parked on it, right at the edge of the street, not into somebody's yard. It's the street itself. And we don't believe anybody could drive through that, if there were two cars parked on it, because there's no restriction as far as parking to the, to, you know, one side or the other. Now, you mentioned, sir, at the last meeting, that, that, you mentioned that the norm or the, the average trip is eight trips per day per car.
That's-
I believe I'm quoting you correctly.
Typically, typically, I consider four.
Well, I thought you said eight.
I don't, I don't think I did. I would have said four, but, I would have, I think I would have said four.
Eight times 16, I think is 126 trips. I don't think we have 126 cars go through our neighborhood in an entire day, at this point. So, that's a big impact of traffic.
Keep in mind, the, the parking variance has already been approved. The park, this board is not looking at the parking variance.
Okay, you're only talking about the size of the unit.
All, all we're talking about is rezoning the property, that's all we're, that's all this board is looking at tonight.
Okay.
The, the variances have already been approved, they were approved at last Thursday's meeting, and just as the, as our attorney said, most of the questions tonight will be addressed when and if we have development plan approval, which will probably be next spring at the earliest, if I had to guess.
Okay.
So, all those will be, all those questions will be answered at that point in time.
Well, that's good then, since I've already brought them up, then-
That's fine.
Everybody will have a chance to have an answer for it next time.
That's fine. I just want to let you know what the process is.
Okay, thank you. And like I said, I wasn't sure I was asking the right questions of this, you know, we're, we're just citizens, we don't know-
I understand.
-exactly how things work. I just, wondering if any of you actually have seen the property in person that you're voting on?
Yes.
Have you? Not Union Street, but the Ricketts one?
Yes.
It's a, it's a little tiny wedge-shaped piece back up in there, and, I mean, you're really stuffing some major amounts of construction into that small area. It's 56 feet wide at one point, and per his, per his overlay here, they're going to be built clear off, even though Rickett's isn't that end, they're going to be, have to be built clear over into the-
Street.
Street, yeah. And that's a little bit different overlay than it was last time. Okay. And just maybe one more thing, the other properties that have been built around town, I don't think they're on a dead end. My point about that is, police normally, on their just routine patrols, will drive through neighborhoods, I love it, they come by my house, I like it. They're not going to be able to just do a pass-by and just look around on a dead-end property such as here, because here's Purdham Street, goes out this way, the only thing they can do, if they don't pull up and sit there and look around, then they're going to have to make a turn there and go out, and they won't actually be able to eyeball what's going on. And, and if they do drive down Home Avenue to look over, they cannot see anything that's going on on the backside of the, of the property. So, I guess that's about all I got to say, thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Jim.
Anyone else in the audience? Zach Aworth, 1810?
I will. I mean, this is going to be right behind me, right over here.
So, on that note, we are going to have city trucks that come in and pick up the trash, or on the dumpsters, or anything?
Private development, there'd be a private company that would, like Waste Management or Wabash Valley, that would pick up trash.
So, at this point, it won't be city at all, it'd just be the private development?
City does not currently pick up for a-
City does not currently pick up for apartment complexes.
Anything over four units.
Okay. So, if anybody's starting to pick up trash, it just builds up and it just sits? I'll just have to wait on whatever company decides to pick it up that day?
Sure, there will be, they'll have a contract. I mean, obviously, we would deal with this if there was not a trash service, or a trash service was to lapse, and there was to be trash flying around. We have code enforcement that does enforcements like that on any neighbor, any apartment complex, or any person who, individual who sets out things that aren't supposed to be set out, those kinds of things.
Well, I just wondered, because this is gonna be right in our backyards. I'm gonna be able to see this every day.
Sure.
So, this is a big concern for me, because I had my son a lot of times, and my mom, my stepdad right there, they live right there, so. And then my aunt, she couldn't make it today, but we're all right there, so this is very important to me.
Got it, I understand.
Penny Hutchinson, 419 East Ricketts. I own and pay taxes on five properties on Rickett Street and South Bell Street. I am not adjacent to these properties, but I will be impacted by the traffic. All of my properties will be impacted by the traffic unless everybody decides to go down Purdon, which that isn't feasible. So, what I'm asking, if he's gonna take care of the snow removal and all of that in this community, will the city pick up the burden of the snow removal in our neighborhood? Because as of right now, even though the plows are right there, right back there, we're the last ones they do. So, that's a safety concern. If we've got this increased traffic, will the city take care of that?
Yes. Yeah, I don't see why we, I mean, part of the city's job is to...
Well, I'm just saying, the trucks are right there, and they don't do it now.
Part of the city's job is to plow streets, and so...
They drive up and down the street with their plows up, but we're always the last one that they do. I mean, I have other questions that obviously doesn't have anything to do with this meeting, but...
From a public maintenance standpoint, I can assure you that we'll, we address those concerns as they're brought to our attention. I don't know whether that's been brought to the street commissioner's attention or not, but...
Well, I think before you bring all these people and the increased traffic into our neighborhood, it needs to be addressed. That needs to be close to the top.
I don't see why we wouldn't perform that task at the same level as we do, we should everywhere else.
I'm just saying, the trucks are right there, and they don't, we're always the last ones.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening. David Tharp, Deputy Mayor of the City of Kokomo. I've come before you tonight to express the administration's hope this passes tonight and the support for this project. As was mentioned earlier during the staff findings, this project coincides with three sets of master plan goals. The master plan for the City of Kokomo, that Mr. Guehline expressed earlier, the parks' master plan to focus on quantity over quality, or, excuse me, quality over quantity, and also in the Greater Kokomo Economic Development Alliance's long-term goals for residential attraction, and making sure that our community has affordable, high-quality housing for families of every stripe. This project meets all of those goals. I won't get into everything else, since the board's or the plan commission's decision tonight is about zoning, but we are supporting the rezoning of those because it meets those three goals. Real quick, though, I will discuss the plowing issue. If you see a truck go by and the plows up, it's probably because they're just salting. The street commissioner makes the determination when they drop plows and when they don't. They do not drop the plow for every snow event. It has to reach a certain level of snow on the ground, because if not, then you actually do more damage to the road than you will rectify by removing snow. But again, that's from the street commissioner's standpoint. Commissioner Ewing makes that call every time. I'm happy to answer any questions as well.
Any other questions from the audience?
Hi, I'm Angela Paul, and I live at 3306 Springdale Drive, which isn't in this neighborhood, but I do manage the property adjacent, which is 608 East Poplar and 612 and 614 East Boulevard. And from that perspective, and I think our concern last time was the green space. I just wanted to, I wrote a letter after the tornado, first tornado that went by, to Mayor Goodnight, and I wanted to read that to you here tonight, just to get an idea of how this neighborhood has been traumatized over these tornadoes. Dear Mr. Goodnight, there is something special about a park. A park is great and green and full of many things unseen. It is where a community gathers, it is where children giggle and grow, born from the seeds that neighbors sow. It is where memories are made, in the cool grass, and futures are designed amongst the swaying trees. It can be a very special place that lingers in our being for a lifetime. I went on to say the properties that I manage, and, which is right in the middle of the areas impacted by the November tornadoes. Although our building was damaged, we feel very fortunate that our portion of our roof, just a portion of our roof was blown off. The devastation to the surrounding family homes is unbelievable. Amongst the rubble and debris, the park near Kokomo Street Department, which is the 720 East Boulevard, was also destroyed. Due to the terrible winter weather that we incurred that winter, we continue to work on repairs to our building. I also run a nonprofit, the Autism Resource Center of Kokomo, which is housed in this building, and also Engaging Minds Autism Services, which employs over 25 people, and we need to keep them as tenants in this property that we manage. I had a personal, okay, I'll just finish. You were, this is to Mayor Goodnight, you were kind enough to speak at our grand opening over six years ago, and you've attended our annual Kites for Kids event at Foster Park, where we are so appreciative of your kindness, of our organization in the past, and can't thank you enough personally for meeting our autistic son, who is upset by all the switch in the street signs from green to blue. He's still upset about that. I'm writing you today to appeal to your sense of community, which has been an undeniable quality that I've witnessed firsthand. Prior to the tornado, many people from the neighborhood enjoyed the park. The park provided some outdoor space for exercise and fun. ARC was able to take advantage of it during our events that were held there, with a few swings and a couple of slides and a basketball court. The space was a good fit for the neighborhood. ARC's volunteers were able to keep everyone safe while still having fun. The street department has started work on the cleanup promptly, but the harsh winter caused a long delay. With warm weather, cleanup has started again, and I'm curious as to the plans for the open space. Rebuilding the park eventually, even partially, would bring the needed spark back to this neighborhood and rekindle the community spirit. A small green space and some new playground equipment would be a wonderful addition to Kokomo. Being so close to Home Avenue, the park could be an enticing respite along the industrial trail Parkway. The huge rear wall of the street department could, seems to be blank canvas for potential spectacular community mural, something representative of our town's history, something symbolic to our people's fortitude, something that inspires our children's imagination. We at ARC are prepared to rally the organization to local citizens and the small business community behind such the vision, either to participate in leadership or supportive. Understandably, such decisions are public property or complex, but any insight that you can provide for this property would be appreciated. Anyway, this wasn't ever responded to, written April 2014. So, I just wanted to give, and I read it because of the neighborhood's concerns about the space and the green spaces that keep diminishing in Kokomo. I know there's one on Apperson that was gifted to Bonavista, that's also gone away, and this is just another example of the same thing. And I do appreciate the playground equipment, but there's still a huge space in this area. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Michael Brown, I live at 1820 South Purdon. I oppose the apartments going across the street from me. They're gonna be across the street beside me, I live right on the corner. I want to know if anybody would want double-story, how their apartments, watching you 24 hours a day. Would you want it beside your house?
Number one, sir, they're not apartments, they're townhomes. There is a difference.
Well, same difference.
No, it's not. No, it's not.
There's gonna be 96 eyeballs watching you 24 hours a day. You can't even go out in your yard, you can't build a privacy fence, because they're too high. Who wants them? Nobody. Would you want it beside your house?
It wouldn't bother me, sir.
Well, let them build beside your house.
If they wanted to, I would be more than happy to let them do that, absolutely.
Well, I'm not happy with it, because I don't, we will have no privacy at all. That's all I gotta say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Julie Howard, 1902 South Bell. I won't beat a dead horse, because I know I spoke last time, but this is not here. I am on the corner of Bell and Ricketts. So, this will impact me directly, because my driveway goes on to Ricketts. And it was mentioned that the traffic flow would not increase, and I'm not sure how that's gonna be possible if it not increasing, when it does go into a dead-end street. People have to get out somewhere. And I know it was mentioned last time that access to the parking would be down the alley, which is in my backyard. And so, that is going to, you know, impact me directly. I know we're talking about, you know, the snow removal and all this. I understand the property, but it's hard for the trucks, for, pick up for trash or anything to get down and get back, because it is a dead-end street. So, still, the city is going to have to pick up trash for the people that are down on the end of Ricketts. The snow is still gonna have to be taken care of down there. Usually, they just kind of push it up into where the salt area is. They're not gonna be able to do that now, because it's going to have apartments and parking there. So, that is gonna be a concern of how the city is gonna take care of snow removal when you've got private property there at the end. I mean, I do appreciate the ones that voted no last time. I think you voted with your hearts and your conscience, and I do appreciate it. Personally, I feel like you've probably been talked to, and I do expect it to pass tonight. But I do want to say thank you to those that at least recognized our concerns and listened to us, and, you know, yes, I'm opposed, and I know there's a park. I don't know what the dimensions, and perhaps Mr. Miller could give us those dimensions of the park area, areas? That's you?
Sorry, my name is Martin.
Martin, sorry.
That's okay.
My apologies.
I don't have the park dimensions in front of us, the player recognizes. So, I would just be thinking something, and I would have a number twenty-two today.
Okay.
But it will be designed within the green space that's available.
That's available, okay. Can you have that later on?
We'll have that by the time, if the project's approved for plan and zoning, or plan review. So, there's a lot of these details that flesh out. Once we're approved, we need to make sure we're complying with all of the code, state code, and all our building designs, all of our accessibility requirements, all these things that have been brought up now, all will be addressed through this body or through that body at that time. But that's information we would deal with once we're funded next year.
Okay.
May the spring and next year.
Any plans to put in a tornado shelter?
We've not, we've looked at that, based on where we are, what the possibility of a common space shelter could be. So, we're talking with the local state now. We don't have anything for one yet.
Just a suggestion. All right. And I thank you for your time and letting me speak today. Thank you.
Good afternoon, I'm Tori Rowe, I'm the park superintendent, and I'm here in the absence of Nick Glover, who is our park board appointee. Just a couple of facts I wanted to give you today. Since the devastation of Gateway Park in 2013, we have hosted 47 public meetings, park board meetings, and have had zero people attend complaining or asking us to rebuild the park in any way. In conjunction with the 2014 to 2018 master plan, when the tornado destroyed that area, Gateway Park actually was not put back in the master plan from 2014 through 2018. We, as mentioned earlier, we are emphasizing, and with the recent master plan, the emphasis of the quality of our parks as opposed to quantity. And with your support, again, here, most recently, we did divide and subsidize Bonavista with part of Meridian Park along Apperson Way. Based off the size of our city and the 2010 census and the National Parks and Recreation Association standards, we are both in the top half for acreage and total parks and neighborhood parks as we sit right now. And I would be more than happy to answer any questions that you guys have of me.
Any board members have any questions? Thank you. Anyone in the audience have any more questions?
Actually, yes, one more, just one more. Zach Aworth, 1810, again. You said your goal is to make the area safe and all that. So, my question is, it's gonna be private housing and all that, and I understand that, but since, if it's gonna be open to anybody that's gonna be private, would that mean that we're gonna open it up to anybody that's got any criminal records? Anyway, like a certain, you know, predatory predators, all, say, pedophiles? You said your goal is to make it safe. What about drug dealers? I mean, they can did it. I mean, it's gonna be private as long as they can pay the bill, right? If I see someone dealing in the back of my yard, over there when these apartments get built, well, they're getting drugs now, and they're gonna go about their way. So, we're gonna make it safe. You said your goal is to make it safe for everybody. Well, I'm just saying, you're opening us up to a can of worms. They're really gonna be right there. I doubt any cops are gonna go back there ever.
Any of those people that you've just mentioned can purchase a home next to you?
They can purchase it, and they can be right next to me. I got a sign, so I'm very concerned right now.
As my responsibility as a citizen of Kokomo, it is my responsibility, when I do see those things, to report those activities.
Does that mean they're gonna get kicked out of the house? They own it. They can just get reported?
You're asking questions.
I'm asking a hypothetical question. Because your goal, you just said your goal is to make everything safe.
And that is...
Then, it's exposure. I don't have to worry about that problem right now, but we're taking a chance.
Sir, I've lived in my house since 1979, and I have, every year, there was a drug house within 100 yards of me, everywhere I live. And the police department do what they can do about it, they're after them, they go after them, they look at them, and it happens. So, it happens everywhere.
It happens everywhere, but it doesn't happen here right now. I don't have to worry about that right here right now. But next year, next two years, it's gonna happen.
You don't know that.
I don't know, but I don't want to take the chance. Again, you said your goal is to make it safe and affordable for everybody? That's cool, but you're not always gonna make it safe. You can't always control who's gonna live around you. I understand that very much.
And you can't do that in today's world without this.
No, but I don't have to worry about it right now. They don't have to worry about it right now. No one has to worry about it right now. We don't have that problem right now.
Okay.
I, excuse me, Tori, I do have a question for you, one more. Now, regardless of whether this passes or not, pass or fail, does the City of Kokomo ever have any intentions, if this does not pass tonight, of putting a park back there?
No. Again, it was not mentioned in the 2014 to 2018 master plan.
So, if it does not pass tonight, regardless, you're still not putting a park there?
Correct.
Thank you.
Excuse me, can I ask, Mr. Zachary, can you state your full address? You kept saying 1810. Would you state your full address for me?
What was that?
State your full address for me.
1810 South Purdon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Denise Dodd, I live at 1225 South Union Street. These townhouses will be adjacent to my home. I'm actually excited about them. As a matter of fact, I talked to Mr. Miller about possibly purchasing one later on down the road, moving from my house to a newer residence. So, I realize a lot of these people here are my friends, and I've known them. I've known them for years. They're opposed, I'm in favor. So, I did not want you to think that everybody was opposed to this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Any other comments from the audience? Make a do, please.
Just one more. To your point, we never got anything on the paper, we never got... We never got any letters about where they're going to have a meeting or anything. I'm just bringing it up. We never got anything mentioned about Park.
No, we never did. No. We never knew anything about any meetings about Park.
I don't think Mr. Rowe was telling you...
He wasn't talking about your park specifically. He was talking about the monthly park board meetings that they have every month. I don't think he was talking about this park specifically. Correct?
Yeah, you are correct. Yes, we do host monthly park board meetings every month, the second Tuesday of every month, 7:00 AM at the park office.
You would have not sent out...
Correct, correct. Yeah, not to any, not any park, yeah, not any, exactly.
But you do advertise them.
Yes, they are advertised. Correct.
But they had discussions about Gateway Park, but we didn't know that they were having discussions about Gateway Park.
Again, the meetings are public and open for anybody to come to.
Where are they advertised at?
In the papers.
In the papers?
Yes.
Ma'am, if you're going to address it, you need to come to the microphone.
Thank you.
And again, folks, this is not relevant to what we're talking about tonight. It is not. What we're talking about tonight is rezone, we're talking about rezoning the property. That's all this board is going to look at tonight. These other issues will be discussed during development plan approval.
Julie Howard, 1902 South Bell. If by some miracle this fails tonight, is there any chance that it could be split so there would be vote for the union properties or each property separately? It's all, it is all or one deal?
It's all one project, ma'am. Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I was hoping that maybe we could have a little miracle here.
It's all one project.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other new comments before I call for a vote? Board members? Here now, I'll call for a vote. All in favor of case 8Z17, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Director Shuline?
Ms. Daniels?
Aye.
Ms. Durham?
Aye.
Mr. Glover's not here. Ms. Jefferson?
Aye.
Ms. Rink?
No.
Ms. Rule?
Aye.
Mr. Stranahan?
Aye.
And Ms. Young?
Aye.
Passes six to one.
Motion carries. It will now go to the city council and be presented there by Councilwoman Jamie Young. Director Shuline?
That's all I have tonight, Mr. President.
May I adjourn?
I'm going to make a little statement before we go for adjournment. I've had the honor and the privilege of serving this city on two boards for 10 years. And I'll tell you what, these people, they go out, they look at this property. We hear that, we pick up the letter, you go by, you go by, you sit, you go out there and you look. You take everything into consideration. You go look at the development plan, and you read it really hard, and you try to say, man, this is really going, these people, it's going to disturb them a little bit. As the city as a whole, are we making the right decision to get new housing in and put some new, and develop some properties that is vacant? There's not one person up here that takes it lightly. There's not one person up here that doesn't go do their homework. There's not one person that goes home after a meeting and talks it over and over again, but it happens. I regret that, I won't say the press, but in the social media, I've been raked over the coals, raked over the coals because Besser wasn't there to vote. I'm not going to apologize because I was in a hospital having my knee replaced. I missed three meetings in 10 years. And I take this job very seriously, as does all my fellow board members, very seriously. They listen to you people, and they come up here and they try to do it, and I'm telling you, they put themselves in your situation, and they try to give it the best one. It's hard. It's very hard to do this job. So when people say, preconceived and all that, I don't believe that. I know these people, I know that they, I know they do their homework. I know they go out there and they look for stuff, and I know they work at giving, passing the way they feel it should be. So that being said, that's all new business.
On that note, we got all these apartments going around town, all of them, downtown and all that. That's cool. You're, I understand you want to get more people in. I understand everybody wants to have housing and all that, but we've already got apartments going downtown. We got a couple of apartments, you know, over there by the mall that are being used. You got double everywhere. You're adding more? It just seems like...
The vote's already been taken, sir. The vote's already been taken.
Adjourn the meeting. Did you make a motion to adjourn?
The vote's already been taken.
Would you please be orderly in the meeting?
It's over.
Now, I gave you numerous times to speak to this board, and you had your chance to speak, and I explained to you what it is. I don't need you coming back and firing back at us over whether you agree with it or not. And I give him a whole meeting to make his statement. The meeting's over. I have a motion. Excuse me?
I said they suck. They suck because they're sending the mail.
Leave, leave.
Folks, we haven't had a motion yet.
Yeah.
Yes.
All in favor, please stick your hand up and say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.
No, you're fine.
I don't know if they're going to do asses out for waiting on my game.
I know the feeling.
You tell me that out of the town, there's no good end, is that what I want to say? Are you serious? Do you really believe that?
Tori, thank you.
How you doing, bud? You doing all right?
I'm doing all right. I've been begging for some smart. I tore them in this case. Have a well deserved...
Thank you, sir.